Ms. Roby, can we start the meeting this evening?
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, October 21st, 2015 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Serrancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzsky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon is absent. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
I'd like to take a moment before we have our moment of meditation to remember those that are less fortunate in our community, locally and globally, those that have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers, many of which we may not know ourselves, but one in particular, just, I believe, just this afternoon or today, Ed Williams, who's in the treasurer's office, he lost his mother some time ago, a few months ago, but his aunt passed again today, so keep that family in our thoughts and prayers and send that to them as well. Also, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the city council meeting of October 7th, 2015, and bills for payment on October 23rd and 30th, 2015. Mrs. Serrancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzsky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you. Are there any requests for postory sales? Are there any requests for postory sales? Are there any requests for postory sales? Seeing none, we will now go on to citizens to be heard. And there's two people that signed up for the agenda today. Mr. Randy Barnes is first on the list.
My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, and I'm here to talk a little bit tonight about things that I think need to be pointed out because people always ask, well, how did Erie get into the position they're in? And people ask about their communities. How did our community get to where it is right now? A lot of it has to do with our government institutions, our government, local government, state and federal government, and our school districts, which I feel is a government entity. So what happens is we have a failure sometimes of the elected officials. And what happens when these elected officials fail us is when they start putting their friends, relatives, family ahead of what's good for the taxpayer. An example of this happened about 15 months ago. When retired city clerk James Clem was offered a $1,000 a month retainer by four city council people who voted for that, and those city council people, reading from the record, were Witherspoon, Serrancunco, Jones, and Winarsky, voted to give this retiree, who later we learned earned the largest pension ever from the city of Erie. Well, I can understand that because many years he was actually making quite a bit more than the mayor did for quite a few years. But he earned that pension, and as a bonus, these four city council people said, well, we can't function without him because we need him to digitally preserve the records. So a year ago, in 2014 October, it talked about how Mr. Clem had worked 40 hours as consultant in August, and he talked about working on this project to digitally preserve the records. Well, almost a year later, in August of 2015, Mr. Clem is interviewed again, and he says, well, you know, these projects are almost half done. But what we found out from that was the project is to call the firm over on Parade Street, say, come and get the microfilm, hang up. That's what took a year and $15,000 we paid Mr. Clem because these four council people thought it was good to give him a $1,000 a month bonus so he could digitally preserve these records. Well, unbeknownst to us when this first happened, all the records from 1980 forward have already been digitally preserved. This firm on Parade Street does that. So what Mr. Clem did for that $15,000 to preserve those records was he picked the phone up and said, Perlo Enterprises, come over and get the microfilm. So they come and get the microfilm, and they run it through this equipment that digitally preserves it. That's what we paid taxpayers and these four city councilmen felt, people, felt that Mr. Clem deserved $15,000 a year to make a phone call to say, come and pick up the microfilm. Does anyone here that's listening out there understand what's wrong with your city government? What's wrong with your elected officials when they put their family, their friends, their relatives ahead of your interests? They've taken $16,000 of taxpayer money and paid this retiree. Now, they'll tell you that the person they hired didn't know how to do the job. The clerk that's sitting here didn't know how to do the job because they needed him to hold her hand for $1,000 a month. That's not right because there's seven council people, over 40 years of experience. None of you seven could help her put an agenda together for the $6,000 a year you're paid? You had to pay this man $1,000 a month to help her put an agenda together for two years? She didn't need that help. This is about your friends, your family, your relatives, putting their interests first, your interests to help them, help yourself, ahead of the taxpayers. Who voted for that? The four city council people, one isn't here tonight, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Jones, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Serrancunco, voted to give this man $1,000 a month, $24,000 on top of his $68,000 a year pension because they wanted him to call Perlo and say, come and get the microfilm. $16,000 has cost the taxpayer so far. And to help hold the hand of the present city clerk because in the council, those four council people's minds, she wasn't prepared to do the job. They needed a man that was here for 47 years, that didn't have time to train the incoming clerk. They needed to pay him $1,000. They needed an excuse. They needed an excuse. They were looking for an excuse to pay his $1,000 a month severance for two years after earning a $68,000 pension. They were looking for an excuse to help their friend. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, Amy Copertori. Hopefully, I said it better that time.
It's all right, council. I'm used to that, getting screwed up. My name's Amy Copertori, and I would like to talk to council about State Street Neighborhood Watch. Before I begin, I'd just like to say Mr. Clem was a great asset to this council, and he's dearly missed, and he was one of the best exemplary things of this council in efficiency. I'd like this to be part of the public record. This Thursday, I'll be meeting with Sue Moyer, and on Friday, I will be meeting with Dave Dieter to discuss the logistics of the development of the Neighborhood Watch for State Street from ideally the Bayfront to 14th Street. I find it sad that State Street was overlooked when the Neighborhood Watches were first developed. Many of the city's problems, including panhandling, loitering, drugs, public drunkenness, vandalism, assaults, homelessness, come through and are a part of State Street. My hope is to give residences and the residents and businesses and their consumers a place to voice about the criminal activity and other activities plaguing the State Street community. I'm sure you've heard about the four people that suffered the K-2 overdose at McDonald's at Fifth and State yesterday, before which I had recently had gone to McDonald's a couple weeks ago at Fifth and State at night. I was eating in. When I asked why I didn't get a tray, the reply was, we don't give trays out after a certain hour because people fight with them. Usually, they are drunk, but sometimes just violent. I asked how long this had been going on. Ever since the manager has been here, that's 14 years, was the reply. How is it that we allow violence to enter Erie and affect her businesses and residents and yet do nothing about it? Yet State Street is revered come May through August with festivals, roar on the shore, and of course, Erie Days. We need to take better care of the communities we already have if we are to attract others to live, develop, and grow here. Let's be proud of Erie. If our citizens are not proud of our city, they will not take care of our city. The State Street that we see during the day is not at all like the State Street we see at night. More violence, more litter, more assaults, more drugs, more alcohol, it increases tenfold. State Street is Erie's main strip, which we ought to be proud of. Our history began with Lake Erie, our history is in our city. Since the prohibition era, Erie was primarily a wet city. We were a transportation hub for liquor to Canada, which led to the development of the speakeasies on State Street. It is time to change Erie's image, Erie's morals, Erie's values. We can only do that with the help of Erie's citizens. Our history of being a wet city still exists today in how our daily lives, our festivals, our State Street behavior is conducted. And being oblivious to alcohol, drugs, and criminal activity is dangerous. It was one thing to have that and be like that in the early 1920s when prohibition was going on, but nearly 100 years later, it has become destructively unhealthy for our community. Let us band together to wipe out violence, crime, drugs, and other issues on State Street. Let us make State Street the honorable street and main strip that we know and love her to be and that she can be. Become a part of the State Street advocates, become a part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll go on with citizens to be heard.
Good evening, council. Richard Wagner, 4228 State Street. The Erie Regional Chamber and its head, Ms. Shafie, recently spoke about some concerns of local manufacturers. Her biggest comment was that the manufacturing community seemed to be having a hard time finding skilled employees. Perhaps it's not that there are not skilled employees, it could be that the wages associated with the skilled employees can't be found in the Erie area, leaving the skilled employees that are here to gravitate to the good-paying shops that still exist in our area. And the truly skilled employees that can't land a job with the good payers have no choice but to take their skills and move on. About skilled employees, I come from manufacturing. Many of the skill sets that were necessary to operate a business weren't possessed by the people that were hired in entry-level positions. Millwrights, electricians, welders, trimmer makers, and die stinkers were all afforded opportunities to enter apprentice programs and become those skilled employees that I mentioned previously. No school could ever endeavor to teach these skill sets. The employer has to invest in its employees. Zern Industries in the last week just informed their foundry workers that their jobs will be going away. I was shocked to hear a comment from the regional chamber's vice president that we don't have to worry, they're not going to move their machine line out of Erie. To the chamber who seems to be constantly surprised by upturns and downturns, they should understand that it won't be long, because of transportation costs alone, before the machine line will be situated next to their forgery operations, wherever that may be. This Tuesday, the CEOs who are members of the regional chamber were invited to a presentation by Mr. Charles Burkey to discuss his comprehensive plan for Erie and the part manufacturing could play in it. I was surprised it was private. The public wasn't invited, and again, as I watched TV, Kim Green from the city, the group from Emerge 2040, and even the Vital Science group were excited about where this comprehensive plan is about to take us. A couple observations. We have a way of acquiring property in the city and turning them into parking lots. 21st and State, the Gaff property. Did I mention 12th and Lincoln? What in the world are the economic development people in this building doing? Nothing. A couple other observations. The EMTA building, a $60 million, 225,000 square foot garage for buses, do you understand that equates to $266 a square foot? Garage space shouldn't cost that much, and at $266 a square foot, I could get you a Taj Mahal. Junior's Comedy Club building, the redevelopment authority has $500,000 to spend on windows and repointing. On the two floors that are in question, there are 46 windows. If I was to spend $2,000 a window, it would still leave me $400,000 to repoint the top two floors of this building. Doesn't that sound like a lot of money to any of you? Channel 12 did a report on the new hotel on the Bayfront. The costs of that project are coming in at around $250,000 a unit. The cost of that project, whatever happened to the economy of scales? Lastly, the project on 27th and Peach. 30 units are being developed to house our vets at a cost of $9 million. That again brings the per-unit cost at over $300,000. I want to take care of our vets, and given that $9 million, I believe I could have provided housing now for 30 veterans' families, but maybe closer to 90. Why do all these projects seem to have total disregard for cost? I think I can answer that. It's not their money, it's just the taxpayers' money, and somehow accountability isn't considered. And one other thing, on your agenda, you're going to approve a contract with waste management. This is what I wrote. Lastly, I see on your agenda a contract with waste management to charge only $40 a ton to handle recyclables. In a prior work experience, I removed recyclables from the waste stream. And for your information, several years ago, cardboard on the open market was traded at $125 a ton. I would venture a guess that recycling at waste management is a profit center, not an expense. One other thing. This is a tax bill for a property of a family member. It's assessed at $1,100,000. The taxes are $9,000. If this $1,100,000 building was in Erie, it would cost $36,000 for taxes. And you wonder why people aren't here. Businesses are leaving, and we have to fix that problem. And this is Winston-Salem, North Carolina, not Wesleyville. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard?
My name is McDonald. My property is 19th and Reed. You know, y'all spending up some money, but I want to know this. When Joe make his budget out and bring it down here and express himself, you're spending money on the revenues coming in. I believe in spending as you get it. Don't spend it before you get it. Wherever you work at, you don't get your check until you done put your time in. So this, you're spending it ahead of time. I don't understand that. You're spending money like you can reach up in the air and get it. That don't make sense to me. You slow down on your spending, and maybe some of these things you'll do right. That hotel line there, I know I've brought this to you before, but this is something that I don't quite understand. That hotel should be paying taxes, and anybody else that build a business, our business is supposed to pay taxes. All the taxes they don't pay is on the taxpayer's back. We got enough on our back. You done roll over bonds, hey, that's on our back, and if we don't get it paid up, our kids would be paying it up. It'll be on our kids' back. Weight on your back ain't good. But then, y'all supposed to know best. Y'all don't know nothing. You need to think. God put a head up there, and he put something in it, but you're not using it. Just like that garbage deal, instead of going out collecting that money, up fee, up fee, that's all Joe know is up fees. I don't know. No wonder you're bringing all them foreigners in here, because these people are leaving. They're tired. They're tired of carrying all that weight. It don't make sense. It don't make sense. And you're taking, the taxes are so high, some of them, they can't afford to pay them, so you take their house. But when them foreigners come in here, you're giving them houses. If you would do that to our soldiers, you'd be doing something nice, and you should do something nice for them. Our men and women should be treated like kings and queens. Go there and risk their lives and come back all maimed up. It's, you know what? God gonna deal with y'all, not only y'all, them other so-called leaders. If you're going to lead, lead. Don't ask somebody, what do you think about it? It's not what they think, it's what you think. You're supposed to use your own common sense, if you have any. You know, we all don't have it. Sometime, I wonder about myself. I don't think I'm nothing great. I'm way back. I know what my limitations are, and you should know yours. And believe me, you're limited. Use your own mind. God give it to you, and he didn't tell you to let somebody else use it for you. You're supposed to be smart, women and men. Why don't you do the right thing? I can't think of nothing you did for us taxpayers. But Joe, you give him everything. Y'all don't disagree when he want something, and that ain't right. Just because he's the mayor, he ain't supposed to have everything he want. Look at that park out there. Look at this park over here. You hardly see anybody in it, but you're spending all that money out there, and I see you're allocating some more money to... I thought that all that money that you had before was supposed to take care of that. You're, wait, I don't know, about $300,000 or something for something else y'all gonna put on over there. That park was beautiful like it was. Didn't need to do nothing. Didn't need to do nothing. Just spend money, spend money. That elephant getting awful heavy on our backs. And we all gonna want to be the mayor one day. Ain't nobody up there fit to be the mayor. Might as well keep Joe up there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, Ms. Roby, can we continue with the meeting?
Ordinances for final passage. Council file 15929, official ordinance number 272015, appropriating the sum of $250,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to account 3929 operating transfer, BUDAG, for this Perry Square project. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mrs. Serrancunzo, the council file ordinance number 15929, and now known as official file ordinance 272015, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Serrancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Brennan. City council pass official file ordinance number 272015, finally by a six, nay zero. Council file 15930, official ordinance number 282015, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $14,284.70 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency to be used for 29 metronomies. By Mr. Murzky and seconded by... Can we get a second on this one? Because Mills is not here. I'm sorry. Okay. Seconded by Mrs. Serrancunzo, the council file ordinance bill number 15930, and now known as official file ordinance 282015, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Serrancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Brennan. City council pass official file ordinance 282015, finally by a six, nay zero. Council file 15931, official ordinance number 292015, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $40,527 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, 2015 Justice Assistance Grant. By Mr. Kwiatowski and seconded by Mrs. Serrancunzo, the council file ordinance bill number 15931, and now known as official file ordinance number 292015, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Serrancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Brennan. City council pass official file ordinance number 292015, finally by a six, nay zero. Council file 15932, official ordinance number 302015, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $32,514.67 from the Urban Forest Contribution Program account fund balance and providing for the expenditure thereof. By Mr. Murzky, seconded by Mrs. Serrancunzo, the council file bill number 15932, and now known as official file ordinance number 302015, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Serrancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Brennan. City council pass official file ordinance number 302015, finally by a six, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file 15933, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $89,011.13 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue, $80,643.28 received earnings from the Enterprise Zone Revolving Loan Fund, and $8,367.85 program income. These funds are to be allocated into the Enterprise Zone program accounts. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mrs. Serrancunzo, the council file ordinance number 15933, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Serrancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Brennan. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 15933 by a six, nay zero, on first Council file 15934, an ordinance amending ordinance number 261958, the traffic code of the city of Erie, by the installation of stop signs at four intersections. By Mr. Murzky and seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the council file ordinance number 15934, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Serrancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Brennan. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 15934 by a six, nay zero, on first reading.
President, I'd like to move the balance of the agenda. I'll second.
You're second, okay. Do we have any separations? Seeing none, Ms. Roby, if we could vote?
Okay, moving the balance of the agenda. Mrs. Serrancunzo, Mr. Jones... Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Brennan. And then we have a waive rules, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll vote on the waiving of the rules first, and then we can vote on the issue?
Yes. Okay, voting on the waive rules. Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Brennan. Council File 15935, an ordinance, the transfer and conveyance by the Erie Western Pennsylvania Port Authority to Lakefront Realty LLC, portions of outshore water lots located in and adjacent to the East Canal Basin, being the same parcel as showed on the plan entitled subdivision of land for Lakefront Realty LLC and Erie Western Pennsylvania Port Authority, prepared by Henry T. Welkin Associates LLC, attached here too. By Mr. Winarski and seconded by Mrs. Rancunzo, the council file ordinance number 15935, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Brennan. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15935 by a six, nay zero, on first reading. That will take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Robie. If we could start with Mr. Mersky today?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. I'll start off, I attended the Convention Center Authority meeting last Thursday, and they made a bid with the city of Pittsburgh for the International Youth Hockey Tournament. This would be like the Junior Olympics of hockey. And they were very, the people from USA Hockey were very impressed with our renovated facility, and our convention center, and the hotel down there. And we're in competition with Buffalo and St. Louis. They were, they already visited Buffalo, and they were visiting St. Louis after us. Over 100 people from the community, business leaders, civic leaders, attended the pitch to USA Hockey, and they were very impressed with the level of enthusiasm and the level of hockey knowledge and hockey experience here. They had the coaches from Mercyhurst University, both two championship teams up there. And it was very professional, very first class. And one of the outcomes of that was, even if we don't get the bid, USA Hockey was interested in our facility for hosting a smaller tournament in the future, like one of their women's tournaments that don't necessarily draw as big of a crowd. But they said our facilities are first class, and they were very impressed with that. The other thing with the Convention Center, progress continues on the hotel. 117 local people are working down there, and those are 117 family sustaining jobs. 4% are minorities, and another 2%, I believe, are women working down there. And there was a comment made that the Convention Center does not pay anything to the city of Erie. Last year, they paid $565,615 in fees and taxes. That's including the parking tax, permit fees, those types of things. Over half a billion dollars they gave to the city. So it's not, while they don't pay taxes on the hotel, there are other fees, amusement fees and other, amusement taxes, other taxes where the city generates revenue from the Convention Center Authority, in addition to all of the people that come into our downtown that wouldn't be there normally. And I think we can't underestimate that. Just a note to the administration, the school zones, I've been getting some complaints from schools, especially Wayne School, that people are speeding through that East Sixth Street corridor, not so much East Avenue, but that sick, where Sixth Street turns into East Lake Road. They've been speeding there. So if we could get some police officers out there. And I remind the citizens to please be careful in those school zones. The children, you know, are, are there to get an education, and sometimes we're, we're late for work and we wanna speed through, but safety has to come first, because your car is a lot bigger than those kids, and we'd hate to see an accident happen. Halloween, trick-or-treat hours are Halloween Day, 6 to 8. So, and we want plenty of police officers out for that as well. And finally, I just wanna encourage everyone, Election Day is November 3rd, please get out and, and vote. There's a reason, you know, our, the judges matter. I mean, I know that there's not, it's three for three here, but get out and vote for your judges. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mersky. And Ms. Cunso?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things to report on. I attended the EMTA opening of their paratransit garage that we were talking about earlier, part of their project, the first phase, and it's a really beautiful facility. And they have made an effort to make it beautify the neighborhood and not just look like a garage, which is really nice. So we appreciate their efforts and the hard work in that project, and look forward to the next phase. That's just one phase. So this is a great investment in our midtown area, which certainly could use that investment. I'm continuing to work with the city comptroller, Teresa Stankovich, and our consultant for the water reserve investment accounts, to rewrite our policy to reflect what we want to see in terms of growth of the funds, so that we can have monies available to transfer to the city for capital, capital improvement needs. So we continue to work on that project. Hopefully, we'll have that done in November, and we'll be able to bring it to council for adoption before you're rid of me on this council. So I have to make sure that's done before I go. Not that you're looking forward to it, but. And just wanted to make a couple of other notes. The recycling and the garbage contract that are on the agenda, there are significant, there is a significant increase in the tonnage fee for the recycling from the prior contract. It's sort of a shame. They did, they did warn us about that at our last finance committee, that it was gonna be a lot higher of a bill. However, just for, for your education, the recycling fee is $40 a ton, where your garbage, garbage is 55 a ton. So it still is advantageous to us in terms of what our bill will be if you recycle more. Besides the environment and all the good reasons to recycle, it is cheaper for us to take your recyclables up to waste management than it is for us to take your garbage. So continue to recycle. I have something else here, but I can't read my writing. Oh, I'm excited, I'm really excited to be able to see that a citizen, Amy, is coming to us to talk about forming a neighborhood watch in the downtown. You know, part of what makes you great is that citizens doing things and making our city better. And we are so privileged to have Amy taking on this challenge and trying to work on a neighborhood watch for our State Street corridor. There are lots of people who live downtown, and they need that representation. So I wanna thank you for taking on that effort. And we'll certainly support you in any way that we can from our council. Just one, one more note, I just wanted to take a minute to extend my deepest sympathies to the Cavato family on the loss of their son in the, in the accident with the garbage compactor. And I know that they're going through a difficult time right now, so keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cunso. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to mention, I'll mention it briefly, and I believe our liaison to EMTA will elaborate. Being a part of the committee, working with, a meeting with county council in relation to some changes or potential changes or different perspectives on the EMTA setup, authority setup, very, very interesting meeting. I have to, sometimes you had to smile, because, you know, if you don't look like it was okay, it was, it was very interesting, because it was very cordial, everything was fine, it was very civil, and it was very positive in that sense. But the balls are already rolling in certain areas. And so I really think it's important that we, as this council, in conjunction with the administration, figure out, you know, collaboratively, as best as possible, how to, how to move forward, working with the county, that, again, best meets the needs for, for the citizens who are the riders and the employees of the, the EMTA service. Not so much for the city or the county, or county council or city council, but for the citizens and the employees that could potentially be affected by any types of changes that we may potentially make in that authority in relation to the charter. So I'll leave that alone. Want to just reference what Mrs. Rancunzo said as well, about civic engagement. I was in a, part of a conversation earlier today around civic engagement, and what Amy, for example, and many others who've come into these chambers, it's great to have the opportunity to share what's wrong. It's more effective and impactful when you, a mentor of mine used to say, "Don't just bring me a problem, bring me some solutions to that problem as well." And so we need more civic involvement, not just expressing freedom of speech, but freedom of creativity that goes along with that speech, to try to help with, you know, creating some solutions and answers. So I think that's really important, that many of us get more involved, not just verbally, but get involved with our sweat, our tears, our finances, our effort and our time. And thank you to all those who do that in whatever way. The rest of my time, which may not be very much, I just wanted to ask a question if I could, Mr. President. I see young people in the audience, I know now heads or people are ducking. We don't ever want to not recognize our youth in our, in our community in general, but especially when they take the initiative, even if it's forced by class or something, to come in and to hear what's going on. So is there someone from your group that would be a representative to speak and put you on the spot? Let's go, you all are ready. I know somebody's ready. And just tell us, you know, get your, whatever you want, what you're, if you're here for a class, or what you're here to do.
We're from the leadership, the youth.
Pull your mic down, sweetheart.
Yeah.
The Youth Leadership Institute of Erie, and we have come here to take notes on the issues, policies that are going on around Erie, and probably we might be here the other week for more meetings, and might bring our problems to. That's it.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you so much. We, I'm sure, unless we're, all have like some serious issues to run out, we can answer a couple of questions afterwards for you. We kind of ran through our agenda, which is sometimes different than normal agendas. When we don't say anything when, when we vote, that means we're saying yes. The only time we kind of verbalize is when we say no, or voting no. I think that's important for you to know. And when Ms. Robie was reading all of those ordinances, anytime we have an ordinance on our agenda, it has to be read out loud in its entirety before we vote on it. And then we have other things that are on our agenda, new business contracts, those types of things that aren't, we don't have to read out loud. So what we did, what Mr. Mersky did, was made a motion to move or to pass the rest of the agenda together with one vote, as opposed to like 49 or 50 other votes. And so those are just a couple little things that maybe you didn't know what was going on in the moment. And again, we can answer some of those questions for you. But thank you for being here, thank you for being the next city council members and leaders in our community, and, and being examples of your peers, to your peers right now. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Just making sure you don't want to talk to anybody else out there, so, okay. Mr. Winarski? Which is, which is fine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening once again, everyone. One of the, once again, welcome to our youth here. One of the things on our agenda today that wasn't originally on it was a waive the rules. And sometimes it doesn't make it on the initial agenda, maybe it, something that came in last moment that we had to look at during our caucus session, which is our meeting before the meeting. And one of the items was the settlement agreement that you may have heard with the port authority and the, they call it Lakefront Realty, the ones that want to purchase some property down at the port. Due to legal issues, the reason that was one of the waves, the rules, is because due to legal issues, it has to be a first reading today. We need two readings before something is passed. And if we were to wait till our next meeting, it would not reach their deadline, per se, if we, they need to meet a deadline. Part of that settlement, just so everyone knows that, why we had to jump on it a little sooner than not, legal issues, which naturally costs money. We're talking some discrepancy on the property lines down there, which there again could cause the port authority more monies, could drag this on. We have a entity who is willing to do some development down there, pay some taxes, as well as pay for maintenance of the basin walls that normally the port authority would be responsible for, which normally they get mainly from taxpayer dollars. So we had our first reading to that tonight, and we'll move forward within, in two weeks. The other thing, I did attend the ribbon cutting ceremony for the EMTA, the Phase One completion. It's a beautiful facility down there, as well as Phase Two of that expansion will be nothing but a huge asset for downtown center city area. Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, along with myself, we did meet with the county regarding extending the charter. It was a 50-year charter, and that's due to expire within the year here. And as everybody knows publicly, the county wants to take over that authority. Right now, I don't feel that's, that's what needs to be done. I believe the EMTA is growing, it's being regionalized already, as well as they're doing a $60 million expansion rate here in the city of Erie, where 70% of EMT riders are here in the city of Erie. They are moving forward, they are looking for improvements. So it's, it's something that I feel isn't broken, so not saying we can't meet and discuss maybe what type of improvements, but there again, maybe we don't need a 50-year charter either. Maybe what if we do a 10-year extension on that charter, or 15-year, then come back, as well as come back in 10 years and say, "Hey, do we need to do any major changes with this?", and go from there. But right now, they've done Phase One. Phase Two is gonna be starting here in the spring. Part of that Phase Two is going to bring parking that is needed downtown, gonna be a grocery store that is needed in the downtown area, as well as additional retail in the downtown area. And some of them are gonna be entities that are paying taxes. So where it goes from here, we'll see. I believe as a city and as city council, we should stand firm on this. Right now, it's not broken, so, but we're still willing to negotiate and move on from there. Once again, great to see young people come out tonight, and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Winarski. Mr. Kwiatowski?
Yes, we attended the parking authority meeting with their authority, and things are progressing well. And they will be meeting with council, hopefully in a short time, we're all gonna get together.
We need to coordinate that meeting.
Right. And that'll be, they'll have some proposals for us, but they're doing well, even with all the construction that they are presently doing, they're holding pretty good in revenue. Suffering a little bit maybe, but it's gonna be a long-term gain for the facilities, and the long-term will be better for the citizens. Get not, I wanna thank Amy for her presentation. And anytime citizens take control of their government and stop pointing fingers at each other, that's, we, we tend as citizens to point fingers and look for blame when we all need to look in the mirror to solve the problems that's facing this community. For us to come back to where we were, or to even approach where we were, is gonna take a lot of hard work, and some of us are gonna have to come up with solutions and be willing to do it ourselves. Can't always look to Washington, can't look to Harrisburg, can't even look to Erie sometimes. We have to be able to do it ourselves. If we're willing to do that, if we're willing to look in the mirror and say, "We're part of the problem, and we will be part of the solution," this will be a better community in the long run. And I think, I hope, I may not see it, but I hope the young people see the community that I saw when I was a young man, one that was vibrant, growing, and our kids start staying here and not moving out of town. So thank you, Amy. And I also attended the EMTA meeting, and I will tell you this, I kind of agree with Jimmy and listen to Curtis' comments. It seems like a lot of, the ball's been rolling pretty steady. But any decision I make is gonna be premised on the fact that the city of Erie is approximately 40% of the county. And along with our contribution... not, you know, we're not forgotten, roots are changed. I stand by that, that we are 40% of the county, nobody ever gets it, besides our contribution, 40% of the county's money comes from this community and it's time they recognize that fact and I'm all for regionalization and trying to make things work, but that's a two-way street. We didn't get any money from the casino and that's a great disappointment and every time we, in the past, when we farmed out our authorities, it hasn't always been to the benefit of the community and I point to, they can argue with me all they want, Civic Center hasn't been a great deal for the city since we lost control of it and neither has the airport authority, so I mean, I think we start to be relevant and any decision I make, it's going to be bearing in mind what's best for the citizens of Erie first. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kwiatowski. Ms. Beck, is there administration report today?
Just wanted to remind everyone that the Booker T. Washington Center is hosting a Kids' Fall Fest this Saturday from 2 until 4, face painting, pumpkin painting, excuse me, pumpkin painting, not face painting, cider, donuts, music, dancing, activities, they could end up on the face, activities for the kids, 12 and under and their parents, so it's a good event for this Saturday afternoon. One more thing through the agenda, winter parking rules go into effect on November 1st, reminding citizens and residents that parking regulations change to November 1st and will be in effect through March 15th, parking will be limited to one side of the street in designated areas based on odd or evening parking regulations during this time of the year. The rules will be enforced through the weekends, only when a snow emergency is put into effect and hopefully we won't be needing to issue any of those. But anyway, November 1st is an important date to remember, pay attention to the signs in your neighborhood and save yourself some tickets. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Beck, appreciate it. I have two items I want to report on, two meetings I attended. I attended the Erie Art Museum, they had a connect forum, it was Community Engagement Forum this past, yesterday, this past Tuesday. They discussed grassroots efforts to reshape our community, proposed projects are primarily in Erie's Lower East Side, connecting neighborhoods was a theme of several initiatives, but the topic, there's been, there's already been two of the events, the topic of this event was the health of the community. Another forum is scheduled for November 15th at 2:00 PM, so if you're interested in hearing about these projects, you know, it's, of course, they're on display at the museum, but you can go to this forum and hear people talk about it and be able to ask questions. I also attended the city of Erie Conference of Plan Advisory Committee meeting, which was Monday, we reviewed a draft of the plan and I'm hoping that we can, council can get another session, study session with a consultant as it goes forward here, as another draft is completed. Some of the things discussed at the meeting is that for this plan to make sense, zoning would have to be updated to reflect whatever's completed in the plan, whatever's shown. Property maintenance was a topic of the meeting and how important that is, you know, right now we have, our zoning laws are important to try to see if we could strengthen those where possible, but really we need to give as many resources out there to really take care of these property maintenance issues that are on our, in our city today. I did want to thank, those are the meetings I attended I wanted to report on, but also I wanted to thank the council members who participated in the EMTA meeting. Again, I'm looking forward to the future meetings and to see how they go and I appreciate to be able to take the extra effort to participate in those meetings. And with that, that'll conclude this evening's meeting. Thank you.
City council adjourns at 8:30. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski.